Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Bayekowski and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight, our prayers for people that are suffering from COVID. We certainly live in difficult times. Dear Lord, for all who have contracted coronavirus, we pray for their cure and healing. For those who are particularly vulnerable, we pray for safety and protection. For all who experience fear or anxiety, we pray for peace of mind and spirit. For affected families who are facing difficult decisions between food on the table or public safety, we pray for policies that recognize their plight. For those who do not have adequate health insurance, we pray no family will face financial burdens alone. For those who are afraid to access care due to immigration status, we pray for recognition of the God-given dignity of all of us. For our brothers and sisters around the world, we pray for shared solidarity. For us public officials and decision-makers, we pray for wisdom and guidance. Father, during this time, may your church be a sign of hope, comfort, and love to all. Grant peace, grant comfort, grant healing. Be with us, Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under whose name stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Any public comments? All speakers will have signed in in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up because on your second bell, I'm going to have to stop you.
John Roach.
John Roach, 116 Grand U. Caris. I just wanted to ask if anybody on the council has started planning or thinking about what do we do with baseball stadium that we now just paint off as supposed to be? We all know that baseball is dead this year, is it, yeah? Muck dogs aren't going to play, but they don't come back next year. What do we do with it? If anybody already started to plan, give it away? Can I just now build something else there? Maybe it's a memorial? But let's not plan that stadium for Muck Dogs to leave when we don't have another major league, minor league team. If anybody can answer that, it'd be great. Thank you.
Kamiko Barlock.
Um, please, dear Lord, thank you for allowing me to have a good speaker. I'm originally from Batavia, but I decided to send her in here. I decided to move to Batavia when I was 18 years old. Stayed up, got the credit in mind, bought my first house here in town when I was 12 years old. And I've been here since. So basically, the last 12 years, I have decided on State Street. With meaning, service, and um, during those past 12 years, basically, I've done quite a few things in the city. I have volunteered places like Hattie Park for immunity and built 23 homes in the town, including one that was actually on State Street. I've volunteered my time teaching quite a few new financial literacy courses. Again, one of those patients was actually a Bozeman State Street patient. So.
Would you mind if you remove your mask? It's hard to trust you. As long as you're within six feet, you should be okay.
Sorry about that. I'm just holding my wrist down.
It's okay. And yeah, it's kind of hard to hear. Go ahead. So you said that you were helping with the community and go on.
So basically, over the last 12 years, I have done everything I can to volunteer in many different areas where I saw the need that there was. And a lot of those places focus around my home specifically on State Street. So outside of volunteering with nonprofits, I've caught some little wild feral cats down there, spent my own money on my pocket to get them spayed and neutered. You know, anywhere I saw a need, I tried to fulfill that need to the best of my ability, either directly to myself or by volunteering with organizations. However, I am pretty much an anti-brave point at this point with this community. I've been in contact with some of the members of police as well as some of the members of this community for itself. And I just want to say that I have the utmost respect for the police officers. My parents taught martial arts to Monroe County officers. I recently myself was at the Blue Knights Tri-State Convention that was at Batavia Downs this last fall. And the way I have seen them treated is not that anymore either. You know, I have personally witnessed with my own eyes, officers getting charged out on my roof. I've seen them be greeted with, you know, a complete lack of disrespect that you would have for another person. And I know they're doing what they can, but with COVID and with, you know, the way the laws and things are, they only can do so much. So that's why I'm here today is to reach out and see what we can do about this situation because, you know, I installed video cameras. I've sent in dozens of videos of incidents that have happened down there. I have, you know, I've had my gardens destroyed. I have had my car windows smashed on my road. I have had couches and garbage dropped in my backyard, which because it no longer include our taxes for, when I call, I don't get any help. I have to pay out of my pocket for those, taking out money out of my medical bills where I need to get my medical treatment to get these things removed because nobody else can do anything. And it's because it's on my property and I don't have proof of who did it, nothing can be done. We've had fireworks for well over a month. It's been all day, all night. Many of us work at home supporting this community through COVID. We are your bankers. We are the people that worked through the 2000, 2007 mortgage crisis. We are the people running your technology lines so that everyone working from home can keep their internet up and going 24 hours a day. We are the people that keep your cable running so the kids have entertainment. There is countless and countless, you know, nurse lines with people dealing with COVID that way. Most of the people are working at home. So, you know, we have to deal with this 24 hours a day. We can't feel this call if we put our job and our livelihood at risk because there's so many complications outside. You can't have a conversation as a customer service rep on the phone. Or even if you're not dealing with personal, personal customers on the phone, you have this constant motion. You know, I have PTSD myself, listening to constant banging and clamming all the time. You know, rockets getting fired at my vehicle at my home for weeks on end. And the answer to that when I called and when I sent videos is was to open the spray park. And I'm sorry, but, you know, it's a great first step, but that's not enough. That spray park has been open for years. I've been living on this road for a long time. That spray park has been open for years and it's not stopped anything. I live in constant fear on that road. I'm afraid to be here. You know, what if one of my neighbors sees I'm here? What's going to happen to my house, my garden, my livelihood at that point? You know, it's constant. I get sexually harassed when I come out my front door. I used to take down, you know, a lot of the stuff that I use for education. I had a greenhouse in my backyard that was stolen directly out of the greenhouse that I used to teach agriculture and education for. I continue to try and try and try. So my question for you all is what can we do to solve this? Because it's been enough is enough. Many of us are looking into deed and loser foreclosure because we can't sell our homes down there, so we have no other option. We tried to resolve it so we can stay and be part of this community. But if we don't get any help, it's going to be more zombie properties because we are done. You know, my neighbor's house was assessed at 70-some thousand, put on the market for 40-some thousand. He got an offer for 11 brands what he sold that house for. My mortgage won't take that. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Marty McDonald.
Hello. Thank you. Marty McDonald, 210 East Main Street, City Church, Batavia. I love Main Street Pizza. I love Nick. He knows that I told him that today. My concern with having a outdoor tent would not only make the traffic that is already there incredibly even more hazardous, but it would also, after speaking with the boutery, Batavia Boutery, we're very concerned about not having enough parking space for their business as well. I'm all for it. I want to help. I wish we could have a solution to it, but I'm very concerned about that square footage there being taken away from the parking and the business that is at there at that point. I'm sure I pull out of that spot more than most people and it's, sometimes it's dangerous because you can't, the cars that are parked in front of Main Street Pizza block the traffic that is coming from the west there. And I just would not want anything to, anymore further to harm anybody. Say that, Main Street Pizza, the best in town. Nick, I love you, I told you that today, but I have to look at this from a practical standpoint. That's it. Thank you.
Good talk.
Mr. President? Could I? Yeah. To Mr. Roach's questions, in fact, John, I just spoke with Matt Ward several times in the past couple of weeks over this. He is working with the teams and the league. They do have a lease and they're working to get a straight answer. I think they're good for at least another year, but he's working with us to get an answer. I wish he could send this one to speak with. He's working to get an answer on what they're going forward, what they're going to do. We do have some plans, some other plans such as college, baseball, there's some other options to look into, but it is on all of our minds. And of course, that last newspaper article mentioned and there was a gun swing in Old West Town was really depressing, you know? But we are working. Thank you.
Rachel, if you want to add anything to this, are you aware of anybody's being worked on with Matt?
Um, so, no, not aware of that. Matt and I have spoken many times about the collegiate level teams or professional, semi-professional teams that might come in if there was a void and the minor league baseball could not come back in the next season. It's my understanding that they are under a lease for two years this season and next, and therefore, again, I have to check it, but that field, if someone, like a community group wanted to use that field or another team wanted to use it, they would still have to go through the Penn League to get permission to do so. The city couldn't grant that type of access to the stadium due to the lease that they have.
Because they'd easily fight off for at least the next two years. Whether they use it or not, they have first right to do that. I just want to ask them. Would you rather?
This is regarding to Kamiko Barlock, and I'm wondering what more we can do for her. It's really a shame that people have to be harassed by other people and the fact that they might get hurt. This is awful, okay? So I want something done about it. Sean, I don't know what we could do, what more we can do, but we do realize there's a problem in that area. And this lady and her family shouldn't have to be fearful of anyone anytime. So what can we do to help her?
Well, I think we did get some calls on it and then Sean has been working on it, right? Sean?
Yeah, so just to update everybody, we have addressed a new net detail up in that area. So there's two officers assigned to the State Street Lewis Hutchins Place area five days a week, eight hours a day. They're on foot. Actually, one of them's here tonight, Officer Hedges and Officer Borkett have become very familiar with the residents in the area up there. They've been on that detail assigned now for, I think, a little bit over a week. And we plan on running that through the end of the summer. So we're trying to throw as many resources as we can up there. We do have our street, our street surveillance cameras in that area. We encourage residents to continue to call us with any problems or concerns that they have so we can address them at the time that they take place. So some of the times we get information that's after the fact and that's difficult to track down, but we do encourage residents to continue to call us. And again, we are, we're throwing every resource we possibly can at that.
Okay, you said eight hours a day that they're over there. What eight hours are they there?
I would rather not disclose what eight hours are.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking. Okay. It's 24 hours a day, okay?
Yep, that's why I don't want to.
Okay. Got it.
Is there anything else? I mean, we've gotten complaints, we've gotten requests, I sent them an email. The gentleman had requested some kind of community police for not understanding how it works. He talked that we had an idea that's something they asked for. Others have jumped in and now this one, we know there's a lot of good people that live down there and there is a few people that have moved in and are basically bullying people around over there. And hopefully, we can get to the bottom of it and find out what's going on. With community help, it shouldn't be a problem to deal with helping people who live in that area.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just going to add to that. And again, I've made the comment many times, the third floor, the fourth floor, they're always getting a lot of feedback. I've gotten a lot of feedback. They're making me earn my money now. I've heard about a lot of phone calls from the State Street area, a lot of emails, very, very concerned neighbors, very community-minded neighbors that are just looking to be able to live in peace over there. Things that settle down for quite a few past years now. Police departments did an excellent job. All of a sudden, we've got additional problems going on there. I've had discussions with Sean and they are, he said, there's detail over there now. They will get the situation under control with confidence. And I just want, all my constituents in that State Street area, we are working on it and we will resolve the problem.
Good talk.
Yeah, I was just glad to hear that we are working on it and Sean's taking care of everything. And also want to see what you can do to help Main Street Pizza, I think what they need. Give them some out-of-recuse. It's not fair to go around the street and see other restaurants without out-of-recuse. And this gentleman can't.
We're going to discuss it.
I understand that and I just wanted to bring it up.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I simply want to state that I am absolutely appalled that anyone who changes, says they are afraid to go home after coming to this meeting because of what their neighbors will do. So I for one, I'm encouraging you to please work as hard as you can in getting that area cleared up.
Anyone else? And just like when we get a call from a constituent like that, if you can please let the city manager know, I mean, the first reaction is to contact Sean and say, hey, this will be it. But he has to work with the city manager anyway, so if we start there, even whether it's the ball field or whatever, if we start at the city manager level, they will, then she can follow up and make sure that, and then we can call one person and then that person should know what's going on. And that's how the CHINA Command works. Just to remind everybody of that, because we're getting a lot of calls in from whether it be D or committee or whatever, she's the central location that we should be working at. That's basically one of the council rules is to go through her whenever possible. And then if follow-up needs to be done, we can contact the department head and follow up for that, right? Just wanted to remind people of that because we have a little change over here. Anything else on the State Street or the ball field? Okay. Communications.
So the first three are primarily just informational. In the past, it wasn't communicated to council which groups were using which field. So when there was concern over the use of the field, it may not have been, council may not have been aware of the significant amount of use these fields were getting. So we just wanted to make sure that we bring it to your attention. It does get sent around to the department heads so that they are aware if they have any concerns, they'd certainly let us know. But it primarily goes through the Bureau of Maintenance and then comes to me, again, just to communicate onto council. So Batavia, my heartily, is looking to use St. Paul and Spator Field for games and practices July 6th through October 30th. Batavia Soccer Club originally was June 24th, but because they couldn't officially start until July 6th, they did change it to July 6th. At Austin Park, it's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursday nights for soccer practice. And the Monroe County baseball region is July 6th to October 15th, utilizing Williams and Dwyer Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. They have not given specific times for that. Their schedule's still to be determined. They just wanted to give us a heads up that that was the area they were looking to utilize.
Any questions, okay?
When we allow them to utilize city fields, who's responsible at that point, Jean, to make sure that everybody's doing their proper social distancing? I mean, is the organization that has the police staff or?
Yeah. Also each, sorry, all of them have supplied their return-to-play procedures and the safety plan associated with utilizing each field.
Now, notice you have two of them there for both baseballs, but I didn't see a safety plan for soccer. I assume there is one. Maybe it might package us in the oven.
Yes, that one did come after the fact because they hadn't originally supplied it. I do have it in the package.
I mean, the two baseballs are almost identical.
Correct.
They both said literally, I don't even know if one was mine or they, but so that makes sense. So as long as it's similar and approved by, do we even approve them or they just have to file a plan?
We do not approve them. They have to have their plan on file as a requirement for the application with new COVID guidelines. The Department of Health has an extensive guideline for interim guidance for sports and recreation during the COVID-19 public health emergency. The omen is on the teams to create a plan and follow it for the children that play, the participants, and the families. So we do not police it. If someone were to go out and witness a sports event and they thought something was amiss, they would cause the new, call the New York State PAWS hotline to file a complaint.
And it'll click back to the county health, which would then?
It kicks back to our law enforcement sometimes. But go ahead, George.
As Rachel indicated, these are part of the New York State guidelines, but they're issued, the guidelines for the sport are issued by the respective clubs. So the clubs are pushing them down to each team. Each team is pushing that down to the parents, the participants, and so forth. So it's ultimately responsibility of the team, the club, the families, everybody in that chain to make sure they comply with that. Because we've seen them professionally, my kids are involved in sports as well, I'm actually a coach. So we're seeing it both ways, that way and that way to be policed.
I guess the question was, who ultimately is going to enforce it? If someone causes, calls the hotline, does that kick to the health department then to the police or does it kick right to the police?
It's kind of a little close, through the health department.
The health department will contact the club and see if we had violation and clean it up or?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought because I know this is what they're doing for restaurants and various other places, so.
Right.
All right, so Jeff, does that answer your question now?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay, and now, we added the yoga to it?
Correct. Blue Pearl Yoga, it came in kind of late, but we were able to get all departments to review and approve. This would be yoga classes in Centennial Park starting July 21st through September 3rd, Tuesdays 6:45 to 8:00 p.m., Thursdays 8:30 a.m. to 9:45. Groups would not exceed 25 people and would maintain their social distance.
And they would probably have their own plan as well, I suppose, but?
They have to.
Any questions on that?
Thanks. Nice seeing the parks just abused even in this dire time of year.
Well, I mean, our parks are always pretty much well-used during the summertime for various activities, I know. You see that dog training, all kinds of stuff in Austin Parks, there's a lot of things going on. All right, so no questions on those. Those are basically more of informational and event application, it just moves through, right? Unless there's some serious concerns, because I haven't seen any. The next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, August 10th, 7:00 p.m., City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. And we also have a proclamation for retired police officer Darrell Streeter, if you want to come up. Want to bring your family up or no? Yes.
Sure.
She's still boss?
Of course. She's the manager.
I was going to say, I didn't want to say pan, so. All right. I'm going to step over here because I want to read this so everybody can hear. Okay, whereas Darrell Streeter has retired as a police officer, he was sent to Batavia Police Department on April 30th, 2020, after almost 30 years of service. And whereas Officer Streeter began his career with the City of Batavia Police Department on November 17th, 1991, as a police dispatcher, he served as a dispatcher until he was hired as a police officer in September of 1996. Throughout his career, Officer Streeter has served in many jobs and roles, including as sniper for the department's emergency response team, worked on the local drug task force, was a field training officer, acted as officer in charge, and was heavily involved with commercial motor vehicle enforcement, to name a few. Officer Streeter received several commendations during his career for his excellence in PWI enforcement, response to critical incidents, and for his bravery and selflessness. Officer Streeter has been a mentor and role model to young officers and took every opportunity to help them develop. Now therefore, in true spirit of appreciation for almost 30 years of dedicated service to the City of Batavia, to the City Council of Batavia, New York, does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Officer Streeter for his dedicated service to our community and to wish him well in his retirement. I just want to say a few words. I want to thank Gino for your words. I want to thank the city council for presenting those proclamation points. It's been a long career. It's had its ups and its downs, but for the most part, I've enjoyed the ride. I've been thrilled to work for the City of Batavia, I've been thrilled to work with all the employees, whether it's the fire department, BBW, you know, you name it, throughout the years. Also with the men and women of the police department, my brother's a Blue, my sister's a Blue, dispatchers. It's just been amazing. And I don't want to miss it, definitely don't. But it's time to get off that ride and start something else. So I'm excited to move forward. So I appreciate it. Congratulations.
The process to hire a new city manager.
Have you wanted this under agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I asked, we put it on the conference agenda and the business agenda so we can forward it. And, you know, we need to make some decisions here, which direction we're going in. And as you and I discussed this some time back, if we would put it out, I, we have a warranty with the company that didn't hire the manager, but within two years or any reason that they would represent us and start a search over again and they'll charge us expenses, which is a pretty, pretty good deal, so.
I'd like to discuss that, see what the thoughts of council are. Anyone have any? Go ahead.
We have a hiring freeze, don't we? Aren't we under a hiring freeze? No.
Well, not necessarily.
No, yeah, we are, but I don't think it applies to the.
It was for part-time employees and things like that.
I just want to make sure.
I mean, again, it's not a mandatory thing, it's a necessary thing due to certain finances, but we have a vacancy that, you know, we could discuss about filling.
We're not increasing, we're not increasing the size of the stadium. There'd be no difference if, say, the police chief said that.
No. Well, because Matt, yes, the reason I said that is because we have someone in place right now, so I just thought if there's the reason, we have someone in place and.
Well, we have to discuss it.
Yes, absolutely.
That's why we're, you know, the sooner the better.
Yes, right.
I mean, a plan could be to at least reach out to the agency, see where their status is on it, let them know our possible intentions, see what kind of feedback we get from there, and then maybe move forward from that point onward. I mean, it is, it's only been a few weeks, but we don't want to wait too long.
No, because there are other openings in the state.
Right. And there is a timeline. The other, go ahead.
Well, shouldn't we ask Rachel if she wants a permanent life?
Well, this is what we're discussing, we could. But she had mentioned to me, and I was going to get to that, that she was interested in the position. That's right, Rachel, we did have that conversation. But that was just early in the, I had personally asked her, the names were getting tossed around, and I said, how do you feel about it? I mean, you're, it comes to, it starts there and works away, the way I look at it. And she said she was interested. So assuming that's the case, we have a couple of options here. We could start a whole new search and come to that conclusion. We could at least explore what our options are and let this thing go for a month and then hit it hard in August. Or we could decide that we like what we see and move right on from here. It's up to you. But some of this might have to be discussed in executive session, but at least some of the process can be discussed here. So I mean, it depends on, I think we should at least reach out and get, see what our option is with that other agency first. And then, once we have that information, then we got, we got more to decide.
You know, I have to agree with you. I think at this point, it's very important that we align all the options right now, get that process in motion. Just put them on, you know, put them online with us and let them know what's happened and that we most likely will reach out to them at some point. So just, you know, kind of put them on notice. So they're starting to think about it and work on it as we're starting to think about and work on, on various different options that are available to us in addition to that.
Right.
I think it's important, I agree with Bob, very important to start the process and then we can. and then maybe move forward from that point onward. I mean, it is, it's only been a few weeks, but we don't want to wait too long.
Because there are other openings in the state.
Right, and there is a timeline. The other, go ahead.
Well, shouldn't we ask Rachel if she wants it permanently?
Well, this is what we're discussing, we could, but she had mentioned to me, and I was going to get to that, that she was interested in the position. That's right, Rachel, we did have that conversation. But that was just early in the, I had personally asked her, the names were getting tossed around, and I said, "How do you feel about it?" I mean, you're, it comes to, it starts there and works away, the way I look at it, and she said she was interested. So assuming that's the case, we have a couple options here. We could start a whole new search and come to that conclusion. We could at least explore what our options are and let this thing go for a month, and then hit it hard in August. Or we could decide that we like what we see and move right on from here. It's up to you. But some of this might have to be discussed in executive session, but at least some of the process can be discussed here. So, I mean, it depends on, I think we should at least reach out and get, see what our option is with that other agency first, and then, once we have that information, then we got more to decide.
You know, I have to agree with you. I think at this point, it's very important that we align all the options right now, get that process in motion. Just put them on, you know, put them online with us and let them know what's happened and that we most likely will reach out to them at some point, so just, you know, kind of put them on notice. So they're starting to think about it and work on it, as we're starting to think about and work on various different options that are available to us in addition to that.
Right.
I think it's important, I agree with Bob, very important to start the process, and then we can, in the executive session at some point, can get together and start to talk about, you know, the candidates at that point, so.
I mean, if you think about it, there's only like three options. I mean, do a whole search, hire somebody, keep what we have in place and make that offer, or a combination of both. So, I mean, there's really, there's really no, there's only three choices there, but again, we need to know what our, if they had other options off the table, for some reason, the company's longer in business, or they don't see it the way we see it, that would be an important thing to know. But, you know, at this point, I think we should do that at least, and then maybe have another, have an executive session planned for next meeting, and then we could really get some discussion going on how we want to proceed.
Because we only do have one meeting in August as well.
Right, so at this point, we're talking about more of the process, and then, anybody who wants to apply can apply.
Mr. President, I did an internet search on the company, it's not only still in business, it's larger now.
Okay.
It's expanded, and the contract we signed with them, the guarantee was, the duration of the service guarantee for this position is two years. Should the selected candidate leave or be terminated from, leave or be terminated from the position with two years, within two years of being hired, the Novac Consulting Group will conduct a new search for no professional recruiting fee, facility only, be direct expenses. But I do have to say, I did have a phone call, and I found it a little disturbing, and I assured the people that we would do our due diligence to hire the best folk by person, anybody here, I mean, I don't care who puts their application, and they're all willing, you know, that it be open to anyone to apply for the job, but that we would, you know, conduct a professional search, and I'm sure we will, because that was under the impression I was under, but I just don't want to see anybody say things that are negative that aren't warranted, so.
Well, the other thing I'd like to know, for one, is what our costs are going to be beyond the initial search? Because if I remember, there was several thousand dollars worth of advertising and follow-up and a bunch of other things. So at a time when things are tight, I want to know exactly what kind of money we're going to be talking here. So I think these are the answers I want before the next meeting, so that I can make, because right now, I don't have any information to make this decision on. So, I mean, it's just, but we have to start the conversation, so this is a perfect time to at least say, "Let's get some more information," and bring it back on August, we should start thinking about every meeting till we make a decision.
I just want to remind you that I don't care for that committee.
Right. Anything else? So at this point, are we in consensus to direct the city manager to at least make contact with the Novac company and find out what they feel, how they feel, put them on notice, and that kind of thing? And then what the process will be on their end, what they require us to do going forward, and then what possible expenses would there be as far as advertisement or whatever, we would have to cover? And then we can look at that, and then we'll have that information for next meeting, and then we can make another decision based on that. We can go into executive session and talk about that as a personnel matter.
Sounds good.
And into more details, and like salaries and things that we would normally not discuss in public at that point.
Yeah, so I just want, since I am interested in the job, I would direct the Director of Human Resources to make those inquiries, so I'm not the one doing it.
It's a good idea.
If you have any knowledge of the process that you may or may not entertain as you move forward, working with the city attorney.
Last time Dawn did all that, remember? She picked up, I think we narrowed it down to three companies, and we passed the NACO.
Right, right. And, yeah, because there's, I mean, there was some concerns, I know there was some concerns on some of the things that the company had done, so we, now that we're wiser to this, we can make sure those will be addressed, so we can start that process then. Any other questions? Is there any, any confusion as to what we're asking for here?
Yeah.
So we're basically asking for more information on the process of going through Novac again, and what kind of cost it was going to be.
Through Dawn and the...
Through Dawn.
Yeah.
Okay. Deer Management, or Deer Management Plan Committee, you have a presentation?
Yes, Council President, thank you. As everyone knows, I assume the role of Acting City Manager on June 22nd, and at that time, I had the distinct pleasure of looking through the Deer Management Plan, which the committee that was formed in November of 2019 was tasked with exploring ways to reduce property damage to residents, landscape, garden plants, deer and human interactions, deer-vehicle accidents, tick-borne disease such as Lyme. I was able to look through the plan, made very minor additions, nothing in terms of form and function that the committee came up with, but more procedural and managerial type recommendations of how applications would flow for those who may be hunters in the city, and how would we keep those on record, and what kind of reporting requirements we would want to make sure council had the direct metrics if they did choose to move forward with the Deer Management Plan as it's offered to you today. Also worked with the city attorney, and I'm going to let the committee tell you the highlights of the plan, kind of the meat and potatoes of what's in there, but before I do, Councilman Canelli was the representative on that, and I wanted to turn the floor to him.
Thanks, Rachel. What a pleasure, and I've expressed this to you guys prior to this, what a pleasure to work with that group of gentlemen over there. It was an experience I've never had in eight years that I've served the community on council. It was a great opportunity to work with a great group of guys that took what we tasked them with very, very personally, realized there was a major problem in the city that we, as council, had recognized, a lot of the citizens had recognized it, and these guys literally put their boots on and they were out in the fields. And they haven't stopped since. There's been, there's been a lot of road bumps along the way, and then we get hit with COVID on top of that, but even through all of that, they've never stopped. Not only did we have meetings together as a committee, but then they met in each other's kitchens and living rooms on their own, in addition to our other meetings. So, thank you, guys, just, and I'll let, I'll let them introduce themselves, but it proved to me that if we can do this with one city problem, we can do this with a lot of city problems. And it really is a very effective, effective way to attack some of the obstacles that we have as city leaders are faced with by getting the involvement of community members involved in the task. And boy, does it work well. And you've received the draft, and hopefully you all read through it. I was involved with the process, and I've read through it twice, in addition to everything else that I've done with the committee. It's just, I just want to say, thank you, guys, for a wonderful job. I hope the plan is well-received from my colleagues on council, which I'm sure it will be, and these guys are ready to attack the problem that we have identified and tasked them to come up with a solution for. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Rachel.
And I think we're going to ask Representatives Russ and Sam to come up and speak about the plan and the details of that, and introduce the committee, and field any questions with the help of myself and the city attorney and John.
I may do so.
You can take it off to speak, yep, absolutely.
Put it back on, you look better with it on.
You got to get a camouflage one.
I'm Russell Matthew. I'd like to first identify, introduce the other members of our Deer Committee. Behind me is Sam DeSavo. We have Gus Galliford, Fred Dondell, and Kent Claxback. Also behind them is my wife, Joanne. I guess I'll start out here. The residents, the City of Potavia have addressed the deer problem with the City Council over the last five years. Each year, the City Council members here for deer problems from more residents than the year before. Some of their concerns were about damage done to landscaping and gardens. Unfortunately, in 2020, we are now facing more serious problems such as chronic yeast disease, better known as CWD, and Lyme disease. The whitetail deer are often infested with ticks and spread Lyme disease. Now we have CWD and TB that are also spread by whitetail deer. The current Potavia Deer Management Committee was formed in November, excuse me, November 2019, which at that time included members of myself, Sam DeSavo, Gus Galliford, Fred Dondell, Kent Claxback, Marty Moore, John Canelli, Dee, Steve, Dee, C-Staff, Robin Vines, and Susan Booth Benstone, to support the City Council in its desire to establish a plan to address deer issues raised by the citizens of the City of Potavia. As a result, city complaints by residents and input from New York State D E C confirm the need for a deer management plan. The objective of the City of Potavia Deer Management Plan, to safely and effectively reduce the whitetail deer population for the City of Potavia, New York, by addressing specific issues. Deer management options, lethal methods, participation application process, and selection. Dates and times selected to implement program, safety considerations implemented to protect all participants, property owners, property pets, other wildlife, and bystanders. Establish of bail stations and stand locations, tracking, field dressing, and processing of deer. Program review activities, public notification, and citizen input. Description of deer management areas, references on past and current research and deer management studies. Other highlights of the plan include, a three-phase approach with a goal to harvest 60 deer per year with archery-only hunting. Plan A includes hunting during the New York State regulated hunting season. Plan B includes an extended hunting season, January 2nd to March 31st. Plan C includes an archery hunt utilizing bait that must be approved by council. There are five designated hunting zones identified in the map where hunters may participate the program. Hunters in the Potavia Deer Management Program will only be able to hunt a land which landowners sign a Landowner's Cooperation Agreement Form. Tree stands must be utilized, and all hunters will be shooting downward. Dates and times for hunting will be from sunrise until 2:00 p.m., and no hunting may take place while school is closed. Participant hunters will need to qualify with their bow and with a range inspector and apply to the City of Potavia to be admitted into the program, as well as signing a participant agreement waiver and release form. All hunters will show proof of current New York State hunting license and comply with all New York State laws and D E C rules and regulations. The plan incorporates New York State D E C setback requirements, specifically that a crossbow cannot be discharged within 200 feet of a school, playground, public structure, factory, or church, or building. And a vertical bow cannot be discharged within 150 feet of a school, playground, public structure, factory, church, etc. The term of the program is for three years, or can be terminated at any time given Potavia City Council's discretion. The council will be provided with annual updates on the program. After three years, the plan will need to be re-approved. I would like to thank former city, former city manager Marty Moore for doing such a great job. He never missed a meeting, always thought positive, and his door was always open. He met with a lot of people, and attended a sportsman's club meeting with Sam one night to discuss, to discuss Potavia's management plan. A special thanks, Lisa Casey, confidential secretary for the City of Potavia, for all her hard work making changes to the plan, and believing there are a lot. To my wife, Joanne, for helping with our paperwork at our own meetings. To Sam, Gus, Fred, and Kent, for a great job making phone calls, roadside surveys, walking through several areas of woods, speaking with residents of Potavia, Police Department, Board of Education Superintendent, other cities, villages, and towns. We met every Wednesday with the former city manager Marty Moore, and would discuss matters that needed to be done. And during the same week, the committee would get together and work on it. Then we would take them back to the next meeting the next Wednesday and discuss them with Marty, and then pour them, and then have Lisa enter them in the plan. Even through COVID-19, we had teleconferences every Wednesday. The committee still stayed in contact by phone and email, and still managed to accomplish many things. From time to time, we had input from the D E C and Councilman John Canelli. On June 22nd, 2020, Acton City Manager Rachel Tavowski joined our committee. She added management and operational points and consideration to the plan, while City Attorney George Van Ness added in-process framework and legal protections for the city. We are looking forward to continue working with Acton City Manager Rachel Tavowski. I hope the committee has met the City Council's expectations in regards of putting together a solid plan to reduce the whitetail deer population in the City of Potavia. Thank you. And now, I will turn things over to Sam, if he's got a couple things to say here, and then after that, we will answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Most of y'all know me, I'm Sam DeSavo. I've been a National Range Officer instructor for 35 years now. I've been a hunter safety instructor, I was for 15, then I started having kids, so I've got a lot of experience in this type of thing. I've helped numerous gun clubs and numerous private property owners to adjust their deer population so they can live a healthy and happy time while they're here. Couple things, I'm kind of a visual person. Now, these, attorney, are right out of the book, but I wanted everybody to see how the actual permit would lock, and how the actual part of the permit would lock. And if it's okay, I'd like to get them to you to double check, and then you can pass them out, is that work? There's enough for everybody. As you all know, there's been more complaints on deer every year, and the reason for that is deer, the deer herds double every year. For every doe, there's at least one foal. These days, we're seeing more twins than we're seeing anything else, so it's more than doubling every year. And that's a danger to the citizens, it's a danger for your vehicles, your pets, they're bringing more ticks in, which the ticks, as Russ said, is the main concern I have in Lyme disease, is thirteen ticks. So we need to do something, and this program, I feel, is very effective to take care of the problems once it's done every year. You can't do it once and just say, "Oh, that was great." It's gotten done continuously for years to keep it under control. Now, there's a deer management assistance program through the D E C that we have to apply for before August 1st. And what this does is this allows us to get as many antlerless deer tags as we choose to, or as we need to. But it has to be applied to before August 1st, okay? Another big thing on that, when a hunter gets his hunting license, you're allowed one... one buck tag and two antlerless deer tags. Well, that's not going to even put a definite deer population at a level of the city. In the, in the write-up that you guys have, it actually gives the numbers of what you've been seeing in just two areas, which I can't consider them, one and two, are kind of the same. You're talking eighty-three deer in just those two areas. That's a lot of animals, okay? So whatever we do, hopefully, the city council decides to go forward with this. It would be a shame if we don't because really something needs to be done. And as you read through the little booklet thing that you see, it tells you all different ways of managing deer, and there's only one that actually works because rest of the law already gets tested in different areas that they just don't work. It's excellent. The nice thing about this program that we came up with for city taxpayers, it's free. Doesn't cost you nothing. And free in my book is good, okay? The only thing, the only cost in this whole entire thing would be we need one cell phone that only has text and talkability, don't want anything else on it, okay? I'm a flip phone guy, so that's why you would find that. But in order to keep in contact with all the hunters, like if there's a snowstorm, school's canceled, you gotta be up four o'clock in the morning to send a text out. That's when hunters get off. And you gotta send it out in the morning and say, hunting's canceled today. You know, go somewhere else and hunt, I mean, but, but we need a means of communication. And in today's world, the cell phone is the best way to do that because everybody's got it these days. So, and like I said, it only needs text and talkable, talking on it. We don't want anything else on the cell phone. John Canal, you had mentioned that there was an old one laying around?
Yeah, when, when we were meeting, Marty had mentioned that, I'm sure that we have, you know, surplus cell phones.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't really think, continue on, but I don't think that's necessary because whoever is going to be managing this program, whoever is designated to, as long as they have your numbers, they can send that text from their personal phone. It's not like we need a special, because knowing how community property works, the minute you know, need to go use that phone, the battery's dead, where the heck's the charger? You know, so this way, you can make one call to the city manager, she can hit a button or designate whoever, page these people out and tell them, no hunting today. And I think we can solve that phone process, okay? But that's, yeah, we'll work that out. We can work that, we could even do it through other means, even if we can work through dispatch, I don't know if that's possible, but we could even have the county dispatch send a text out and they can get on, you know, there's a way, there's many ways we can communicate.
And I believe that's about all I have. Rachel, there's a way we can stop it, hangs if we miss the August 1st deadline?
So, um, the August 1st deadline is specifically for the
Deer Management Assistant
deer management assistant program. We, without council moving this forward prior to that, I wouldn't be authorized to apply for that through DEC. However, there is the, George, correct me if I'm wrong, the extra tags in G8 would be available to hunters if this plan moves forward. And then secondarily, deer damage permit tags also can come into play where DEC would work with us for that. Russ, is that what you were referring to, to make sure? I think the way we wrote it was that because we're so close to that deadline and not going to make it because council's next meeting isn't to August 10th, that year two, if they went forward with this plan, we would ensure that the city manager on behalf of the council applied for the deer management assistant program to have those extra permits available in year two.
Okay, and then for the nuisance permit, if we needed to go in January, which we hope we don't, that's when the nuisance permits were originally figured?
Yeah, and those are the deer damage permits, correct? Same thing, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Just, just to, just to add something here, in your own plan here, on, I don't know, page two, it says, um, there's no cost applying for this permit. City of Batavia will be responsible for the application to DEC after reviewing the previous year's metrics and determining if additional permits will be needed. So that's for the Plan B, the late winter hunt. And so this is only the first year, and we didn't wanna, we, we still haven't even had landowner buy-in yet, so we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves on this, so. And also, if I remember correctly, when I buy my license every year, my sportsman's license, I get one either sex for my doe, for my bow, and I get one antlerless just for the bow. Then I get two additional permits, usually if I want them, two additional antlerless deer permits. So that's me as an individual without applying for extra permits, that gives me two, four permits, plus after a certain date, I can get an additional two more. So if the people that are involved in this, they can play it right, they can get five permits and still have a nice buck permit for someplace else if they want to take a buck, okay? So, and then they still have their buck permit for the gun season.
Correct, well, you can use buck tag during the archery season also.
Right. So that leaves, I mean, and that's before we even apply for these additional permits. So I think there's, I think the first year, I mean, we had talked on the phone about, you know, trying to get this pushed through, but we need, there needs to be more public input on this, and we wanted to get a, a period of time for some people to call us back and give us some opinions on this. And to push this through today would have not have been, I don't think it would have been fair to that process. So I think we have a lot of permits there, and those that get picked for this program, if it moves forward, if they played their cards right, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, ten guys would have six permits each, and they could technically take fifty, sixty deer out of there if they're lucky and successful. And first year, I think we're gonna have no problem because the deer aren't harassed in there, they're not used to being hunted. The second year, those extra permits in January might come in handy because that's where you might want to bait and do, maybe even the third year, you might want to do things like that. But I mean, just throwing that out there from my personal experience, that first year is gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be difficult to call some deer out of there. But the second and third years, they might start getting clever and they start figuring it out. But just, just how do you feel about that?
We just wanted to clarify that, that's all. And as far as the DEC would give Rachel the tags, and you then would hand them out. If need.
For the, for the damage tags you're talking.
Correct.
It's a separate thing versus the applying in August thing and then getting that done for later. One other question I had, it said when school is closed, if the governor doesn't open up schools this year, that whole thing is down then, right?
Exactly. When there's no school, there's no hunting, safety tag.
Okay, and I had a couple more. A crossbow, now there's, crossbow isn't usually allowed until the second, last two weeks of the bow season? Would that be allowed earlier in this zone or no?
Crossbow usually opens up the first Saturday, November, I think it is. So you're talking five, six weeks into the season.
Right.
But if we entered the deer management assistant program, crossbows would be allowed from October 1st
Good.
till, I think it ends in December, February this year.
Okay, twelve clubs, who are the, what are the clubs that we're talking about here? There's no list.
Me and Marty, I took them to a Genesee County Federation's sportsman meeting. And what that is, is the twelve gun clubs in Genesee County all belong to the Federation, okay? And they do different things for the land, for the habitat, Federation, with all the sportsman clubs in it. I can try and name another few.
But you're saying the person would almost have to be a member of one of those clubs to apply?
Right, there was a reason for that.
So that, so that they're a known person in that they're obviously involved in a club?
If somebody belongs to a club of any type, they have the proper moral ethics and values they want to work for the program, because you just don't want anybody who's perfect.
Right.
You want somebody that's known, they have the proper moral values.
Right.
You know, and experienced.
No, I just, I was okay, I just, I think at some point we need to list those clubs. So somebody who's a member of a club knows that his club is on that list or her club's on that list?
It's in Genesee County, it's on the list.
So Godfrey's Pond, Raccoon Club?
They have a whole field, they have a zoo club, their school for the rights, Son West, Event
Oatka, and all the, all the
Well, yeah, well, it's, yeah, and Laika, there's the other one on golf.
Okay, I just wanted to make, if they're all the ones in Genesee County, that should be, that should be easy. And one more question, it said the deer are not to be allowed to be field dressed in the field. Where are we gonna do that?
Marty was looking into two different places, but I believe it was the DPW?
That can't, it can't be DPW, because just
No, it was one of the guys One of the waste, the waste area, and nothing was confirmed at the time.
But we'll have to figure that out, we'll have to find a place.
We have to figure that out because, and we didn't want to put anything in the draft because that could change at any time. So that's the reason why
So you want them, you basically don't want to leave any trace of anything, not remnants in the field, you're gonna remove it, take it to a secure location and, and take care of it and render it for butchering or for donation or whatever?
I have a question about
Go ahead.
Yeah, if, if you're gonna use city property to field dress deer, who's gonna be responsible every time that property's used to make sure it's cleaned up?
That's what I mean, that's why we're having trouble with that process.
We don't recommend the use of city property to field dress deer.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, that's something that's gonna be worked out. I mean, I mean, the person, I suppose, can take the deer home and do it, I mean, I've done that before too, when it's been inclement weather, I just load it up and went home. So I mean, we'll, we'll have to figure that out, but I don't think any, due to the cleanup and, and the necessary precautions that have to be taken, it would be a lot of work to have that cleaned up every time, especially if they're getting two or three deer a day or something, you know?
I'm going by rock boys, because this is what they do. Behind their police station, which we can't do that in Batavia, they have about two feet of wood chips. Everybody comes in and they, last year, I think you said they took a hundred and forty-eight deer out of there, and they come in, and when that section is full, they put more chips on top. Then when that section's full, they keep layering it. Now, as you know, compost pile, it
Yeah, right.
I tried some. I said to him, I was talking to the officer in charge, and I said to him, what do you do with this after the end of the season? He said, we put it in the tangle and take it out to the kind of pit, and they just dump it in the pit.
They bury it, so, you know.
And that's it, simple.
So we'll, I mean, we'll have to figure something out, I mean, that's not, I think the whole plan is pretty much solid except for just a couple minor details on it. But the main thing is, is we need, and we didn't have any of the landowner buy-in yet, that's why we needed to wait a month to continue on with the process.
We felt as far as the landowners go, the majority of it is city-owned property.
Right.
There's one, two, number one and number two are private owned, and a twenty-acre spot of number four is private owned. All the other spots
I think three is private owned as well, too.
Oh, three, yes, that's it, we got permission for that.
Well, certain parts and
Right.
Right. Right, so, so that's, so that's why we're, I mean, we're not trying to put this up, but we need to, it kind of got ahead of us with this COVID thing, so that's where we're at. So anyone else, I'm sorry to take up this time, but I wanted to
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Sam, who's gonna be responsible for enforcement? You know, I mean, as we know, municipal law and environmental law are two entirely
Two different things. The, the, what we were thinking is the committee itself would take care of things. Now, if a hunter gets harassed, it doesn't matter where you're hunting, you call the DEC, which is right in the, the book there. We talked to the city police chief, and he said he doesn't have the manpower or anything, which is fine, because it's not the city's police job to do this, it's the DEC, okay? So they would be the ultimate enforcement over everybody. We would, what the committee wanted to do is make sure that if you're going out, we would personally take whoever, say, for example, in zone one, and we would take them out and show them, walk through the zone alone, help them pick out a spot so they know what they're allowed to be in and what they're not allowed to be in, okay? And what they can shoot safely, and what they cannot. So we were gonna do that with each guy in each zone.
As you know, I mean, we have several incarnate officers that live in this area.
Yes.
This is their area. I mean, would there be any possibility to get them to come in at random times and supervise? Because if someone's breaking the law, they're not gonna cooperate with Sam to sell them.
Correct.
If someone's out in somebody's backyard and they're field dressing a deer, and it's a problem.
That wouldn't be one of our guys.
So
Yeah, I mean, I think based on your screening, you're gonna be okay.
You're always, you're always gonna get some renegade that crashes in, it's like, hey, you know, this is open season for me.
Some of the properties, there's other hunters that hunt there already.
Right.
So they have nothing to do with what we're doing, what we're trying to do.
But you even have, excuse me, you even have landowners that have relatives that they let hunt on their property.
Correct.
We have no control of it. And so they said, well, just to let you know, I have two cousins that are hunting over here also, okay? But as far as what they do, we, like I said, we have no control of what they do.
Right, but they don't hunt in the city.
Sure they do, because you can hunt in the city, can you? Legally.
Yeah, technically you can.
You can hunt with a rifle, a rifle in the city, legally.
If you can meet the, if you can meet the setback guidelines, which I don't know if two hundred and fifty feet would be enough for a rifle. But there is places on Bank Street, you know, on the back part of Bank Street where some houses butt up to some country right there on Bank, right by Bank and Chandler. So I get it. But I mean, I would think that our, we would have names of the individuals that were, they're sanctioned to go in certain parts, and we would know who they are. And if they're not following our policy, their permits get revoked and they're not invited back. It's, it's that easy, and if somebody has a complaint, I'm sure they'll, people will not get the memo, and they'll see a camouflage hunter dragging a deer out, and they'll say, what is he doing with a deer in the city? Then they might call the local police, they show their permits, everything's fine, you know? I mean, I mean, it'll, it'll work its way out. I think a lot of people will be glad this is going on, and some won't be. But I mean, you did a survey, and your survey shows a positive, majority of people want something done, and some are indifferent and some would rather not harm the deer. So I think it's, it's, it's an average, it shows a good average there.
As you know, it's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, but this is a very, very, on the part of the committee and the whole process, it's a very controlled process. These guys, and when a hunter goes out or hunters go out, these guys know who's out there, when they're out there. I mean, they're, they're, the hunter themselves will have to document all this. So they've got, will know who's out there and what, you know, units, at what time, as you can see, you know, parking passes. So if a police officer goes by and there's a car there, he, the car is identified as one of the hunters. It's a very controlled process.
At one point, talking about being controlled, was the cell phone that I brought earlier. And a lot of these other programs in these other cities and towns, there's one self-contact cell phone. You're a hunter, you go into the woods, before you get out of your car, you have to text that cell phone or call it and say, I'm John Doe, I'm going into area three.
Right.
This time. When you get done, you have to call and say, okay, it's John Doe, I'm leaving area three, I'm in my car. Now, if you don't do that, guess what? You're out of program.
Right.
It's simple. Now, that's why we were looking for the cell
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna have to work that part out. I mean, we could, we'll designate, you know, again, there's no cost on its face, but there is manpower cost at a time when we're kind of tight on manpower and things like that. But I think it could be done, and, and some of the conversations I had was like, geez, do we want strange people on city property hunting? And I think it's the exact opposite. When you take a sports, sportsman or a sportswoman, whoever, who's into the sport, they're, they're gonna try so hard to do it right because they don't want to have it be a lost opportunity or them get kicked out of the program. So if anything, there's more to lose for them, and I think they would try harder to make it right. I know as any I know as any hunter, there's so much scrutiny now, you're trying to be the best you can be and not cause any problems, because you don't wanna lose the opportunity to be able to hunt. So, um, I think having the right people from the right clubs, and you know, you'd screened and we screened them properly, I think you're gonna have, uh, good ambassadors as well as hunters there.
That's what we're looking for.
I mean, that's the goal, I would think, because you're gonna wanna be an ambassador and a hunter and do everything right so that you're, you're low impact and, and not too much attention, you're just solving the problem and you're not drag, dragging deer across a street and causing a commotion, you know, something like that.
I think we stressed that this draft also.
Uh, that's kinda the way I saw it, is you're really looking to get the right people in there.
Right, and, and we stress safety as number one.
Right, and I like the idea of making people qualify from a tree stand and being able to demonstrate their skill level, um, so that they're not just, you know, going up there for the first time and trying to.
Well, that's one reason they have to have these five years, uh, experience, that knocks out the 12-year-olds to the 18-year-olds right off the bat.
Right.
Okay, so you have five years of experience with both, chances are, if you've been out for five years, you've harvested a few deer.
Right.
So that gives you that more experience.
Right.
So when you do come into a program like this, you're gonna be safe, you're gonna think, be thinking more, and knowing that there's only two or three other people in that particular area, you're gonna be extra careful.
Right.
And you have a limit of a 25 yard shot.
Right, I saw that in there, yeah, and that's probably all you're gonna get in that tight area anyway, but still, I, I think it, I mean, I like it, I think it's well thought out, and I think we oughta seriously, you know, I would suggest we move it forward, and the next step is to get the, um, landowners and to get public input and, and see how that goes, and then we'll talk about it again in, at the August meeting, right?
Yes.
So is council pretty much in cons, anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry to.
One question, please. Are you looking to make this clear, are you looking to get the landowners' permission first before it's approved by the council?
I, I would, I would think, I would, Rachel, I mean, I would think that's kinda necessary. If we don't get their permission, other than the little bit of city property, it's gonna narrow the program down dramatically, right?
Yeah, but putting the horse before the wagon though, you know, it's normally, you say, you know, the landowners say, this is a program the city's doing.
Right.
That we'd love to use your property, we're only allowing this many hunters to have the property.
Right.
And also they know exactly what's going on, and I don't see any of the landowners saying no.
Well, I mean, it's, you still have to let them make their own decision, and, and here's.
There are a lot of landowners, so it's, it's, it's a question, it's only a few.
Right.
So, I mean, you can do it, you know.
Well, here's, here's the plan, we're gonna move it to the August meeting anyway, because we have to, because we need public input, okay? And in that time, it wouldn't hurt us to start reaching out to the landowners and saying, here's the plan. Now, even if one landowner is in on it, it wouldn't stop us from still approving the plan, and then even if no landowners are in on it, we can still approve the plan in anticipation that at some time down the road, a landowner might be in on it.
You know, let me just interject from, from my experience with, with the committee, and this has all been discussed, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Russ and Sam, I think we kind of landed on, um, you know, when we go out, we get the, the plan approved by the city council, when we go out and, and because there is very few landowners involved, if we don't get that particular landowner's approval, we just move on with the program, because we've identified all these pockets throughout the city.
Right.
Where these deer are entering the city and bedding down, and so if we lose one area because the landowner doesn't agree with it, that's okay, we're gonna still have a somewhat effective program and at least start to reduce the deer population, so, and that's why we figured, you know, get the approval and then we'll go to the landowners, but because we have this gap here, I agree, Gene, that, you know, we can start, start the process of getting some landowner.
Right, I mean, we got a month anyway.
Mr. President.
And now, does anybody, go ahead, bud.
Yeah, I'd like to hear our city attorney's opinion on this matter.
He's, he was part of the whole drafting of the whole plan.
We're not bad, we were in communication with the committee, we met with, uh, Marty Moore, he was working through it, obviously, and Rachel, she was working through the final drafts, and had a phone call with the, uh, DEC representative about the plan. DEC has looked at the plan, they find the plan acceptable for a deer management program of this type. We looked at it from the standpoint of integration, committee integration operations as existing, um, operation of the city to the extent that there's gonna be active, uh, uh, community activities and so forth, but also obviously looked at it from the standpoint of the police waiver and identity, make sure that was efficient, and felt that that particular form, I suppose, is appropriate, um, for the last term policy standpoint, ultimately, that obviously is up to the government, but from a protective standpoint, we're at an appropriate level of protection for the city in this type of situation.
So you're, it is what it is, and you're, you're, you're happy with the plan as it stands?
Well, yeah, I think it's appropriate given DEC's input, given the committee's hard work on this with the city management, um, so, you know, at this point, DEC has determined that it's the guidelines, what they would require for a deer management plan to issue deer management permits or deprivation permits, so, uh, the DEC has been indicated willingness to approve and move forward with that approach.
Sam, if the property owner totally objected, he still would have the right to go post his personal property, correct?
You own the land, pay the tax, and you can do anything you want on it.
True.
It's your land.
So that prerogative's still there for a property owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we can't force anybody to do anything, but.
It's their thing, they own it, they can do what they want with it. They can say yes or no, you know what he wants.
So can I just make a clarity point? On page six of the plan, there is a deer management priority evaluation area, these are the, Sam, it's the map that shows the zones, these are the, the zones that we might watch for deer to survey, correct? And they also.
Watch, walk through, catch and tango.
They also may be the landowners we then approach, um, we, we may need just to look into, um, city, and George, correct me if I'm wrong, city property was never part of the discussion in this, or?
Well, well, number four is city property.
But.
But in terms of other areas that were being considered, they were, so, I think the question of whether or not the city allows hunting on city-owned property is something the management I will have to address, because my discussion with the past managers, that's not something we would recommend, um, but we didn't see tax maps or all parcels for that four or five or et cetera.
Right.
So to that point, next steps are to hone in on tax map parcels and who would let you hunt there, because this map was strictly where you evaluated and areas you saw were potential.
Well, what we know further back is number one and number two are privately owned. Number three is privately owned, we already have permission from both landowners. Um, number four or five are both owned by the city of Batavia. There's, now, number four, I think the city owns, it's gotta be almost 200 acres, and then there's a little piece by the fast tracks, um, it's a 20 acre spot, it's two acres deep by, um, five, six acres long, running right along 98, and that's privately owned by a city resident. So, been at the tax, or the tax maps already, so.
Let me clarify, if I could.
Let, let's, let's, let's speak, real quick.
Based on my conversation with prior city manager, that was an issue that we identified or tweaks to the plan. If, if in fact parcel, or map four contains city property, we have to go back and work it out, the, the, back to city manager, if the tax maps confirm that, we can report back to council and.
Right. I mean, and we're not, I mean, I can understand the, 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 the policy of not allowing recreational hunting on city property, but this is a goal to solve a problem, and it's a specific requirement above and beyond your average hunting license to just ask permission. I mean, you're filling out forms, you're getting tested, you're proving a point, you're limited to certain implements, you're limited to certain hunting stands, I mean, we are, we're narrowing this down to solve a problem, so we would have to strongly consider that as a waiver, so to speak, on that particular piece under this particular circumstance is a lot different than saying, we're gonna open up all city property to hunt waterfowl over at the city ponds or whatever, that's not the same thing.
It's a city program.
Right, right, so.
So therefore, we should be able to find a way to utilize our own property to do that.
Right, and we're, and we're a landowner as well as the other landowners, so this is that process we should be doing in the next month to look at the pros and cons of that and, and get that down, but, um, I mean, I see it, it's very thorough, um, and I like the, you know, you're very right, you're regulating it to very few people that are gonna be able to pass all these qualifications, and then these are people that'll probably be known to the hunting community, and, and if they're, on top of that, if they're known to be, um, sketchy on some of the things they do, that will come out, so that'll eliminate some more people, so I think we'll get down to the, some decent hunters, and I'd like to see the program at least go for one year and give it a shot. One more thing, Al.
We all land in, 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 in your sector three.
Your land is off limits.
Okay, all this.
It's, all your land is off limits.
Just clarify that.
Yes, it's private property, you don't want us on it, we're not going near it, it's that simple.
All right, thank you.
So. We are just gonna clarify that, because there are other landowners that back up to yours.
Right.
We do have permission, you said no, it's no.
That's it, that's the way it works.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions, then?
No.
I did, I just have a suggestion, Mr. President, we don't have to have a council meeting, we have a public hearing. We can't have a, pardon?
We don't need a public hearing.
We don't need a public hearing.
But you said you wanted input.
No, 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 I'm talking like, call us on the phone and, because we got a month to hear from our constituents as to how they feel we, we should vote in this, I mean, whenever there's a contribution.
I just received an email today from somebody.
Yeah.
Expressing, um, your opinion on it, so, um, and that's what we want time for, is just to get some feedback from our constituents.
Because a lot of people don't know where we are on this plan, and they don't realize that it's pretty much a final plan, going through the last ends of the process now, and when this hits the paper, then we're gonna get some phone calls, and I wanted that to happen in the next month and not pass this to tonight's business and make it a law, and then it's too late for input. I wanted the public to have a chance to weigh in on this.
It's already on Batavia for four days now.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's been on WBT every day also.
Yeah, and I, I haven't.
Which is the way it should be.
I expect to get a few calls on it, so, I mean, I wanna hear how people feel about it, I think it's important. And, and that's, I mean, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's the first year, um, and, and we need to walk a little bit, and then if it works out well this first year, if it gets passed, if it gets well, if it works out well this first year, then that will allay a lot of the fears, and then we can maybe expand it to that winter phase next year, and then, and maybe if it doesn't work, we could go into phase C if we had to at a later year, so, I'm willing to, I'm willing to see how it plays out with the landowners at this point.
And we're following, just to, you know, to get a little bit more backup of the process, we're following a lot of the, the guidelines that other municipalities have had the same problem, have, have followed and have had successfully.
Right.
So that's where these ideas, I mean, like, like, uh, Sam and Russ said, they've been in contact with a number of different municipalities, and they all had their own little systems, and we've taken bits and pieces.
Right.
And tried to put together something that fits the city of Batavia, so they've had proven success with it, and we feel very confident that this is gonna be a very successful program, and we're gonna have to tweak it.
Right, and it's new, and, and there's gonna be concerns, but like I say, if, if we get the right people to do the hunting, and, and they're ambassadors as well as hunters for the sport and for the city and for everything in general, I think that's gonna, that's gonna weigh big on the second and third year.
Great, hundred percent.
So we only get one chance at making a first impression here, so.
That's exactly.
We wanna do a good job in the beginning. Is there any other questions for these gentlemen? Thank you for all your hard work. I mean, I, I like the detail, you've guys really drilled down and really got into a lot of detail on this, and I, I think that's important, because it's, people are gonna have questions, they can read that, and I think a lot of the questions are answered right there.
We did what you guys asked us to do.
I appreciate that.
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, school resource officer agreement. Wait, before we move, so is council in consensus to move the deer committee, uh, final plan to the next meeting for an official vote?
Yes.
Which would be the August meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want us at that meeting too?
You can be.
Okay.
It might not hurt to have, be there for any additional questions that might come up between that time.
Is that August, uh, what?
Ten.
Ten.
Monday that time.
Yeah. Okay, so now we have school resource officer agreement?
Yeah, um, thank you, Council President, before you, you have a memo, a resolution and a draft to consider at tonight's conference meeting, this is not moving to the business meeting. Currently, the city of Batavia provides a school resource officer to the city of Batavia School District. Um, we entered into a memorandum of understanding in July of 2019 to maintain this officer and add up to two more officers over a three-year period. During the city's planning of the 2021 budget, the city did not budget to add the second officer to the SRO program, and began working with the city of Batavia School District to draft a new agreement. Um, at that time, they also changed superintendent, the new superintendent came in, um, and that was also an impetus to draft a new agreement. So after working closely, and I'll give credit to the police chief for working directly with the superintendent, um, and also the city attorney, the, the attached agreement is here for your consideration. It provides that the city will provide one officer to the district at this time, the school district will reimburse the city of Batavia 100% of the officer's salary and benefits, that differs from the original agreement, the original agreement was 87% of our lowest-paid officer. So financially, um, this agreement, um, benefits the city for the district and certainly benefits the district for having one of our officers in their schools. The city would then be obligated to assign the school resource officer to the school according to, uh, mutually agreeable schedule during the academic year. We're responsible for providing a vehicle to that officer, as well as training, the uniform and equipment, and the term of the agreement will run through June 30th, 2022, and may be terminated upon 30 days written notice by either party. Just so you are aware, the same agreement as is stated here will be, um, looked at by the Board of Education on their July 20th meeting. Um, if there's any small minor changes, we would then incorporate those to the final agreement you see in August.
Now, this is gonna replace the original agreement?
That's correct.
It's not additional to, because the original agreement had a, a, a three-year plan with additional officer every year, so now we're down to just one officer, one agreement, and 100% the salary is paid.
Yes.
And we supply vehicle training and additional, you know, uniform and stuff like that.
And you said that's correct.
Any questions? Um, Rachel, remind me again, how long is this, a one-year agreement or two or three? What is the time span on this?
Goes through June 30th of 2022, so two years.
Two school years.
Question?
Yeah, go.
Sean, I'm sure you can answer this, but, uh, what will, it says the payment won't be made, it'll be made within 30 days following the receipt of an invoice.
So I believe the city invoices quarterly, quarterly?
That's correct.
So they'll invoice the school every quarter, and then the school, school will be required to pay within 30 days of that invoice, so they'll cover it every, every quarter, there should be some kind of payment.
I understand, just thinking, you know, they're working off our money for quarter and then getting almost a, a month to pay us, so. and then getting almost a month to pay us, so.
Yeah, but they're covering the whole 100%, so I don't, there's really no interest there. Any other questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to the August meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that moves forward. Sidewalk program, now, to correct me if I'm wrong, this is going to go to tonight's business, right? The sidewalk, or is that August as well? What, so the?
Franklin Street's tonight.
Franklin Street, okay. Rachel, do you want to cover the sidewalk?
Yeah, I'm just, yes, it does move to.
August.
It goes into August because they are going out to bid for it after.
Right.
So the information we've gotten from the federal and state government is that CHIPS funding was released at 80%, and that was the impetus to move forward with the sidewalk program for the summer, and I'll let Matt cover the details of the sidewalks that will be improved.
It is, the past several years, the sidewalk program pretty much mirrors our street programming. Any CHIPS funding or federal funding which is used for the street rehabilitation, we just bought all of ours, also carries with it the requirement to bring any of the sidewalks on to ADA requirements, and so we have married the sidewalk improvement projects to our paving projects, so that when it's done, we basically are able to check that box when we submit for reimbursement through the New York State. So the projects this year, we are doing a sewer and street paving project on Franklin Avenue, paving on Roosevelt, which was completed this past week, and then a couple of sections of North Spruce. In addition, those sidewalks will be followed up on these very same streets this year, bringing them into ADA compliance, we refer to the Pro-Wave, it's on the public right-of-way side. So those are the targeted areas for sidewalk improvement.
Well, the resolution says Franklin, North Spruce and Roosevelt?
Yes.
That's correct then?
Yes.
Okay, because the other, because that's where I got confused, I saw Franklin on here and I confused it with the other project, so. I see now there's Xs in here, so we don't have the actual final bid yet, right?
It's against the advertiser bid yet, just now that we're only doing one meeting a month.
So we got to get this done now, right, or we're not going to get it?
Prior to the meeting, I'll have, we should send a memo with all the detail on it, we expect to have it out to bid here, I think in about a week.
Okay.
So it'll be advertised.
Any questions on that?
And then also, just to mention it, it also goes in and hand with whether we're not doing quite as much street work as we did one time, because an awful lot of our funds get eaten up on the sidewalk side because we have to do that, so.
Yeah, it makes sense if you're ripping it up anyway, you might as well do it all at the same time.
Correct.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the August meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. The Batavia Brewing Company.
Yeah, we have before you a memorandum, a resolution and a draft agreement to approve the application for 109 East Main Street, which is Eli Fish, for a temporary outdoor dining application. If the council decided to approve this application, myself and the city attorney would work with the restaurant owner to apply to the state liquor authority for approval for them to serve alcoholic beverages outside that. During COVID, that approval period has been fast-tracked through state liquor authority because they are encouraging restaurants to expand outdoors and create more socially distancing opportunities while still bringing in revenue and serving clients. It was reviewed by all the department heads and there was no further comments to the plan.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have some comments here, not specifically on this, but specifically, over in the last meeting, we discussed outdoor dining for restaurants, to help restaurants through the COVID period, and we agreed that we'd ask the staff to present a proposal, what it's going to look like, what we're going to do, and then for George to present a legal opinion on that. And I asked, well, you know, it can be sent to us in our packets, which we never received, but the bigger question comes in about this dining in the parking areas, that's what started it. I didn't see it that night, and then the next day, it was on at Batavia, then the next day, I find out that the city approved this, and it's a great idea, and we're going to have dining in the parking areas, and I did have some phone calls, unfortunately, two of them were from friends of mine that questioned my sanity for approving this, and I said, we didn't know anything about it. And there was a sketch, and it shows people sitting at tables on Main Street here. So the more I started reading this article, I called Matt Worth, I says, Matt, did you know anything about this? And he says, no, he wasn't consulted with it.
Why would you call Matt Worth?
Because Matt is head of the DPW.
Counsel President, excuse me, I think we're talking about two different things. I'm talking about the parklets versus the outdoor dining.
Okay.
It's a different issue.
Right, but let me finish, okay?
Sure.
So in any event, some of this, you know, is probably a misrelease of information at best, but then it said that there was a application with a $250 fee, which I kind of feel is usury, I mean, if someone wants to use part of Jackson Square and it's not being used, and we're supposedly helping them out, I think that's a pretty stiff fee. And that was one of my concerns, we didn't, there was no process, we didn't see the applications ahead of time, or, not the application, but the process and discuss any of that, because I certainly would not support a $250 fee to put some tables and chairs on some city property for two months. And then the other concern I have is, and I couldn't find it in here, there's no termination date, it just says 2020. So I think it's vital that we have a date that tables and chairs have to be picked up no matter where they are in city property.
Well, as I recall, when we discussed this, it was presented to us as a possibility, and we said move forward on it to encourage, because time is of the essence, we couldn't have done this any sooner, by the time we would have gone through a normal process, it would be October, and what would the purpose be? And I think it was state-driven, right, Rachel? I mean, you want to jump in here, explain?
Yeah, I think we need to go point by point. So the first point, respectively, Councilmember Bykowski, is the Parklets article that was issued is a totally separate conversation that Felipe Ultramari at County Planning is having with the Batavia Development Corporation and the bid, and they're just looking at different ways other downtowns may slide customer base, and certainly, I absolutely agree with you, when you see that picture and you picture that on Main Street, that's not going to fly. We know the traffic, we know the dust, it's not going to work. I think they're looking at it as maybe some interior streets where they might be able to use it.
On Friday night, there were tables and chairs set up in the parking area.
In the parking area?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and this was, I think that Felipe was more of a concept and throwing ideas out in the future, and then we happened to come up with a different thing, and at the same time, because I wasn't, until you just mentioned it, I wasn't sure how the Batavian would have our whole plan on here, and I'm like, what are you? It was a totally different thing by timing, it just happened to come out around the same time, but it wasn't anything we were considering on our own.
They did talk to me personally about it at some different meetings we've attended, and I said that has to be totally separate from what we're doing, that would be a whole different process for the city to look at, and we think that can be looked at at a later date.
And Main Street was off the table anyway, because we have no control over that, as I recall correctly.
Yes, and I think guidance was just issued today, and, is Andrew here?
I am.
Andrew, can you talk about the state guidance that was issued today and the state, and then we'll go right back to Councilmember Bykowski's questions.
Yes, if Rachel is correct, the Parklet was a discussion point at our BDC meeting, basically just saying that we're kind of compiling a group to investigate this, gather data, research, to potentially down the road, bring it to department heads and then maybe council. So a separate issue, outdoor dining is through the city, that city-owned property, Parklet would be probably more of a 2021, 2022 concept. And perm 33G was recently released from New York State DOT, which is a COVID-related outdoor business dining and sidewalk application, which they sort of spearheaded as well as quickly as possible to allow Main Street businesses and businesses on 63 and 5 to put in an application to potentially use that sidewalk legally, in compliance with all the rules and regulations, ADA compliance, as well as potentially parking spaces, but it all has to go through the state and is done in open.
Thank you, and that was, we just got that email today.
Yes.
The state trying to also be friendly to restaurateurs to set up tables outside and also have some kind of feedback for those. So then I'll move to point number two, at the last meeting, council did ask us to move forward, and operationally, we created an application, the city attorney and I had already been working on it, and also a license agreement, so that if council chose to take the applications we got in, they could see that the applicant filled out the application, they've put a drawing in there, and that we have a licensure agreement to protect the city's interests. So that is point two, and third, Councilmember, what was the third?
The fee.
The fee, so the fee.
You are collecting the money, according to this, the fee was paid.
The city, yes, we are, and several reasons for the fee. The first was we looked at other economic development applications, such as the IDA's application, there is a fee attached. We also had feedback from bid businesses that can expand on their own property, and they thought it would be unfair not to collect a fee from those users of this temporary dining. And the last point is that we really wanted to make sure that those coming to you, well, two more points, were serious and wanted to move forward with this type of program. And lastly, there is staff cost involved, especially when we move forward with the attorney's review and moving it to the state liquor authority. So that is how we determine the fee in an operation.
I can't support that fee, and the other concern I had was there's no cutoff date. I see you signed a contract with someone, but there's no date in there, I mean.
We can certainly amend.
Terminated at the will of City Council.
Pardon me?
It's for the COVID emergency for the period of shutdown, terminated by City Council, like council's decision.
Right, but in, if it snows and somebody says, well, I'm just going to leave all this stuff out there because I don't have.
Well, then we terminate it.
And we have the year 2020, you know, I really think a reasonable date to.
It's a license agreement for this period to try to encourage and expand business operators out of our municipal space.
I know what it is. I'm just saying, though, that we should have a date like November 1st, so.
Was November 1st a nice day or bad day? Are they going to shut down? We don't know.
If it snows November 2nd, and they say, well.
Excuse me, if I may interject here, the key word is council can terminate at any time. So if it snows and they say, we're not going to move our stuff because we're lazy, council comes to a meeting and says, you're hereby ordered to remove it, the date is over, you're revoked, it's done. So, I mean, I agree with the attorney, at some point, we don't know what our fall is going to be like, and it could go, we might luck out, and they might want to get a couple extra weeks out of it, and if we put a date on it, we're cutting them short, so the weather is going to determine itself, and it's a temporary thing based on the COVID emergency. If the emergency gets lifted, and they can go back to 100% indoor dining, it's a moot point at this point. Pick up your tables and go back to inside, and we don't have to allow them to go any longer if we don't want to, so.
Can I just add one thing about why the state liquor authority was looking at these options for municipal space? Basically, the state liquor authority's position through guidance for the COVID period that if property owners, restaurant owners, operators had access to owner-controlled space, they could expand their operations into that space. However, if it was municipal space, obviously they would have to go to the municipality, seek approval of municipality, which is why we looked at this, why the city manager and project manager had discussions about what would the process be, what would the documentation be, what would the risk management be, and then you also have the layer that the state liquor authority requires the municipal SLA approval, which includes on city space.
Right, because we're actually allowing alcohol on city property, but that's where the license comes in to designate certain.
The agreement is for the use of the space as well as protection of the city, and then
the liquor authority. The liquor authority.
And then you have the application. That's the process, the SLA forward, which is why we formulated it the way we did with the council.
Right, right. And at any given point, if we're not allowed, we're not able to, for whatever reason, allow a person to use that property, if there's a financial hardship or if there's a concern, I suppose we could, as council, could determine to refund their fee. I mean, we, nothing's written in stone, and we can take it a case-by-case basis, and we can, we can conduct business that way, I mean, we can have that conversation, so. That's what we decided, I think at last meeting, we can look at the minutes, but we decided to get the applications, bring them for us, before us at a case-by-case basis, and we will look at the situation and, given them one at a time, there's not going to be a blanket approval. So that's what basically is happening here. I understand the fee, I'm not a big fan of fees, but I can understand the situation we're in and.
You're saying this fee's only for people serving liquor? If somebody has a restaurant and they want to put two tables on the sidewalk, are you expecting them to pay $250?
They wouldn't need to come to the city if they're the public right-of-way on Main Street for a.
No, I didn't say Main Street, on the side street, if someone has a restaurant and they want to put two tables and chairs out there.
It is my understanding that they can do so, as long as they don't impede traffic and are ADA compliant without coming to us now.
It is a city sidewalk?
Yes.
And whatever, I mean, I don't know if there was something that had to be moved or whatever, they'd have to be able to take these in and out every night or something, right? How would that work?
Well, again, we're separate issue on city sidewalk, you know, putting two cafe chairs outside of your coffee shop on a city sidewalk, as long as you're not impeding traffic, is a totally separate issue than expanding into a neighboring lot, parking lot, Jackson Square.
Putting planners around and kind of cordoning off its space.
Right, and in that case, the answer, George, I believe, would be, no, you can't serve alcohol on our city sidewalk.
Absolutely.
That is for just expanding your area to serve some food and, and non-alcoholic beverages. But this was never intended to expand onto sidewalks, it was more into larger spaces, whether it be Jackson Square or parking lot, or even the potential of a side street that might be shut down to expand, that, those were all.
You're talking, you're talking planners, coordinating it off, putting a canopy up possibly, some of these plans had.
Yeah, the other component of this, and I was on a webinar with the state liquor authority council about these issues and about these expansion opportunities, and basically, the licensed premises not have the ability to use that non-owning space for liquor service, they just couldn't do it per se through the license. Making us this type of application, that's a different issue, that's something that's not allowed by the state, but something different on city sidewalks, where not owned, not controlled, would not be something a license fee under state liquor authority license would ever be able to use.
The state liquor authority, by the way, George, is controlling this whole outdoor dining expansion, are they not?
So they're doing it in cooperation with the municipalities and trying to buy flexibility.
Right, yeah.
So they're offering, they're offering flexibility that will extend the license beyond their own property if the city has a process for.
Normally, you can't do that.
Right, right.
A lot of people don't realize, even a golf course has to have a separate license for their beer cart that was on the course.
I didn't know that, that's something.
It's not even covered under their liquor license, so.
You wouldn't.
And I wouldn't have spent more.
So is there any other questions on this? So let's hear, so that's the, that's the process, so we're, now we have the first one in front of us, the Eli Fish.
Yeah, and you would be moving it to the business meeting and, and at the business meeting, if you so choose.
That would be tonight's business meeting, right, so we can save another month of, and the process, and from what I look at, it's basically the property that, have they actually closed on the property that they bought from us?
Yes, but it's beyond that.
It's just a few feet beyond that, it doesn't look like very far, but it's a few feet beyond it, right? All right, so that's, that's what they're proposing. And how does this, how does, how do we feel about that? What is the city's status on that piece of property in this application?
We had no comments from department heads, except I thought it might be nice to put umbrellas on the tables.
Okay.
That's the comment I got.
I would suggest that city stay out of the bistro business and just stick to the, all right, so. So how do we feel, is any discussion on this particular Eli Fish property?
No.
And the city is, they pretty much vetted it and it looks okay on their end, right? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. The next one.
Yep, the next one, and I'll preface this with, I absolutely love Vic and Main Street Pizza with all my heart. 206 East Main Street Pizza, Victor Mar, I'm going to say it wrong, Marchese, came forward, and while we love the idea of having more pizza outdoors, the location of where they want to place the outdoor dining is directly to the east side of their building, and after review with the city attorney and department, we feel like we can't recommend this application to council. Unfortunately, the tent cannot be erected per the New York State Building Code, so no matter where the outdoor dining is, if they were to possibly move it in another location, that doesn't work. The city does not own the entire parking lot in the area we're talking about, we're talking right in between Main Street Pizza and the Bootery would be the other side of it. Part of the parking spaces where the Bootery is, is owned by that building owner, and we don't feel like it's appropriate, if we were to cut off the other parking spaces, they might not have access to their parking spots. Separately, talking about a one-way street moving into that, if you were to create a one-way traffic flow into that area, we don't think that's appropriate for council to consider just for a temporary dining basis for operations at this time, and we do feel there is significant traffic safety issues with cars traveling in and out of the lot and backing up, back and forward into that lot. I've personally worked with the applicant and building owner, trying to see if there was another location they'd like to have us consider or work on, and at this time, they wanted to move this application forward.
Any questions or concerns?
I don't, I don't even know where to begin. This is a very unique situation, and again, I'll repeat this, I spent more than half my career in the wholesale liquor business, and I worked with Paul E. and his dad over at Alex's for many, many years. I understand the restaurant business like any restaurant owner understands it, and in any town, I don't care where you are, the restaurant business is an extremely competitive business. Vic is in a situation where there's not a lot of area for him to expand on, and consequently, because he does. And consequently, because he does not offer outdoor dining right now, he's at a major disadvantage. There's, there's restaurants in this town, we have wonderful restaurants in this town. And every restaurant is doing a bang-up job with all this COVID stuff. Right from the start, I said it, it's impressive that these restaurateurs have really stepped up and survived this entire thing. But here's a situation now where outdoor dining is almost imperative to the survival of his business. Marty, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to quote you. I love City Church, and I've never told you I love you, but I do. But, and I understand your position, and I understand your tenants' position. And I'm just saying, we've got to find a way, and I don't know what that way is, but we need to find an option for Vic Marchese to continue to do business in the city of Batavia downtown and be able to compete with the restaurants that are out there that are basically eating his lunch right now. And, and so somehow, some way, we need to work with Vic. And I know, I know Rachel has tried to make an attempt to find out another, find another option for him. But I'm just saying, this, it has to be done. I mean, it really, I'm sure Vic would agree with me. He's not going, he's not going to pull through this thing if he cannot compete with the rest of the restaurants. He's down 50%, like all of them. So he's got 50% of his business inside. We all know the business that it does. He does a tremendous business. He's a very popular restaurant. But given the fact that he can only put now half the people on the inside, he's already taken a major loss, one that I'm not sure that any restaurateur could survive. And so we need to find a way to help Vic out, and like we're helping all the other businesses out in this, in this town, and figure out a way to put some tables outside. George and I had an extensive conversation about the legalities. I get that. And as a city representative, I have to protect the city and, and, but also as a, as a councilperson, I need to, I need to protect the businesses in this town as well. So I don't know what the solution is. I just don't, I don't have that solution. I don't know what it is. But I'm begging us as a city to find a solution together with Vic to allow him to have that outdoor dining. Now, I don't know what the thing is about the tent. I know George explained it to me. I don't quite understand that because on city property, we have other things going on with tents, so I'm not sure how that all fits into the.
It's the building, John. It says, it can't be within 20 feet of a parking space or buildings.
So how do we do that, then, with like the public market that has tents out there?
No buildings there.
But you have property lines, though, right?
No, this says building, I think, because it's a building code. So.
So it's just a building, George?
Right, and, and a parking's.
There's some tax and property lines that are joining buildings. So that wouldn't exist in a park or wouldn't exist in open space like farmers'.
Because in the, in the, let's say the farmer's market, they're not parking there while they're using it. But they would be parking here nearby, and you got, maybe it's the exhaust, I don't know. Or maybe they're concerned about a car hitting the building or hitting the tent. I don't know why they would do it, but it says here, according to here, a tent cannot be within 20 feet of lot lines, parking space, buildings, et cetera. So they couldn't put the tent there, because then it would stick out into the, and then we got to make it a one-way street. I totally agree with you. I wish there was a way to help out and put it in maybe a different part of that. Maybe the rear of the building, we have exhaust. He said there's exhaust and stuff back there.
They've got the exhaust fan right there.
So I don't know.
Farmer's Market, they delineate it, and then they park their vehicles here, and then the tents are in the inside. So that's how they stay back to 20 feet from the parking spots, too.
So that's the thing.
May it be allowable without a tent?
Well, I don't know. I mean, because now you're still taking up the space, and you have to get one-way streets, and then you got cars coming in, and I don't know.
It's not a permanent thing. Put the tables up there, let the guy make some money, and get over it, okay? It's ridiculous. We're doing one for someone else. We can't do it for this other guy?
No, I totally agree with you.
Just put it up. It's simple.
I totally agree with you, but if, if something were to happen.
For three, four months, and then it's overdone with. Not a permanent thing.
I understand the traffic concerns coming off of, off of being. So one of my thoughts is, is there a way that we can, instead of moving it around back, is there a way that maybe we could move it, maybe a smaller area, but move it towards the, the back of those parks, towards the end of those parks?
I don't know. I mean.
These are the things that I think that we need to explore, and we have to do it fairly quickly. Because it, again, it's just, it's one of those situations that I, it's unfortunate, I know, but it, there's, I'm a true believer, I tell my kid this all the time, there's a solution to every problem. We just have to find it.
I agree.
I think that was explained, though, that that option wasn't pursued this evening, that Mr. Marchese wanted to stay with the original proposal.
Right, exactly. He wanted that, I'm sure he wanted that proposal to come to council and let the council make the decision, which is our responsibility. And, and like I explained, it's, you know, it's, it's very difficult for the council to approve something that is not recommended by the city manager and the city attorney, and that just.
Or in the city staff.
Right.
And, and we're, and we, and it's really, I don't consider it our responsibility or our, our job or our place to redesign the plan here. I mean, this has got to be redesigned by city staff, and they got to work together on that. But I, the way the plan fits now, we can't approve this in its entirety right now. We can't.
Absolutely not.
And to be clear, I asked him to put in option A, B, and C in his drawings, because option A had been problematic for the discussion we've had as a council in other matters. So I did ask for alternate options, so we, the staff could look at A, B, and C, whether it was around the back corner and other places, and unfortunately, that's not what we.
Well, and if I recall correctly, this, this similar type thing came up before the COVID, and property was discussed, and because of the similar reasons, it was not decided to go forward on it. So this is no different, temporary or not. It's basically the same plan, because now we have COVID, and we have the same plan. So, I mean, there was valid reasons for that expansion being denied then. I mean, I wanted that to happen, too. I, I agree with you. I think it's a great idea, but there is a big problem on the other side of it.
Council president, I might add one point, as I think we touched on at the last meeting. Part of the SLA process also requires a safety plan to secure the area to be used where the, where the public would be eating and drinking and enjoying themselves. We would have to submit that with the municipal SLA application. Because of the specific nature of this layout, that could raise questions. So in respect to the event council were to move forward with this, there's no guarantee that SLA, when they looked at the site plan and the proposed safety plan, where you've got cars backing up at perpendicular to that particular area, would find that that was sufficient safety. The discussion that I was privy to as part of the statewide call was that essentially, they want material barricades to separate the public from vehicles. And because of the unique nature of this parking area, it just makes it that much more of a challenge. So we wouldn't know to be able to tell you or the applicant if this somehow moved forward, that the SLA would find that sufficient for the purpose of the SLA application.
Thank you. I'm getting disagreeing with my colleagues simply because of the fact that you've got one business we're talking about, and there is the boutery, our spa, Tia Brown's, they use that parking lot, the church, the YMCA. There's five items that Rachel listed that we can't possibly do this way. Not to mention that on our business agenda, we are going to pass an ADA Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator. And you want to take handicap parking away from people? I don't think so. Stop and think about this. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. And there's a lot of businesses up on the top of those buildings. What are you going to do with them? That's it.
Anyone else?
It's not a permanent thing.
I agree with.
It's not permanent. I don't get it.
I agree with Roe as far as the handicap parking. That was one of my thoughts is, if we could move it down a little bit further, you maintain the handicap parking there. Vic, you're sitting right there, and I'm just going to, I'm going to throw this out to you. And if you want to get together with me, I would be more than happy to sit with you and maybe figure out an alternate plan to this. And I don't know what that would look like, but it's up for discussion right now, and I would love to see you be able to get some kind of outdoor dining there. And I don't know what that looks like, but I'm, I'm sure we could come up with some kind of a plan that, that we might be able to work with city management on and, and get something done for it. You know, maybe those parking spaces a little bit further back aren't quite as important as the handicap parking. Maybe it wouldn't affect City Church and, and the tenants in that building quite as much. I don't know. I'm not sure. And, and it would be something that maybe we could talk to Marty about as well.
I mean, I, I think trying to make it a one-way street during a temporary situation, it's going to be a nightmare.
I agree.
Because you're going to end up with people pulling in and leaving at the same time and not, when did they make this one way? And, you know, then, two months later, it's not one way anymore. I mean, that could be just too confusing.
I totally agree with.
And it's going to cause an accident. It's, it's going to be a problem.
I totally agree with you, Gino, to uproot that kind of a situation.
There's got to be some compromise, maybe a little less footprint or something. Bob?
Interesting suggestion, and I have to throw this out there, but what about Main Street sidewalk dining? You know, the building that they're in is quite wide. You could probably get permission from some of the other building owners. So maybe you could have a, a table set up, meeting social distancing. I was at a place, an establishment yesterday, and they're, you know, they got hit, same as everybody else, 50%. They lost their business by 50%. They've increased their takeout orders, but they've also gone to reservations and with time. And then they've suggested to people to place a takeout order for their reservation, so their dinner is ready to turn the tables over faster. And they had four tables, I think, for outside dining also.
How would that work, George, to put tables? I mean, I haven't been by there in a while. Does.
DOT right away, right? You have to follow your offices with DOT, so maybe you have to go through the DOT process. Do you need to have approval? Sounds like some of the NIs have come through. If I could just touch on a little bit about the tents. The tent issue primarily is a carbon dioxide issue adjacent to the vehicles and parking spaces and the lot line as well. The smaller pop-up type tents are under a square footage. That threshold doesn't apply. You don't have people sitting in their tents. That's kind of what's the driving force between the, the tent issue, just for clarification. So a table with umbrellas over top would, would work. But not a permanent tent adjacent tight to the building or within that, those combustion engines of vehicles. But as far as Main Street itself, there will be the DOT process. Sounds like they've got some, some guidance on that and how that process would work throughout.
So maybe a combination of both or something. I don't know. But I think it needs further review, but we need to, by the time we make a next decision, it's going to be August, so. We would, I would hope that we could work with them and at least try something and get some tables out somewhere, and maybe not as large.
My next question is if, if Vic and his people can come up with a, an alternate plan that seems to work, is that, is that something that can come to council outside of another meeting, or how, how can we handle that?
I don't think so. We'd have to vote on it individually. I'd be willing to call a special meeting just for the one thing, if we could get that thing approved.
We may get more applications in the meantime as well, so I don't.
I mean, the faster we can do it, the better, to help everyone out. So I wouldn't be against that. I mean, we have a whole month. It doesn't mean we have to, we can leave everything planned for the August meeting the way it is. And if we, if this came back and it, it looked like it was a go, I would have no problem meeting sometime during the day and just approving this one plan under the circumstances. Why not? I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'd want to help out as any way we can. But when I see all these many bullet points of no from city staff, and, and they would have tried any way they could to make this fit, there's got, we got to listen to that. We have the staff, and they're professionals.
I agree 100% that there's, there's so many layers there that wouldn't allow it, you know? Again, let's, let's.
So at this point, are we, we're not moving this to the special business meeting. Maybe kick this back for further review or further work on it. And then if we could come up with some reasonable plan, if council is available, we can get six council members to show up and approve this at, and, and type of a semi-emergency basis. I would be willing to do that in a heartbeat. I mean, if we could just.
I'll give you a call. We'll set something up.
We're not going to give up on you, Vic, but we, we got to work something out. This one just can't go the way it is. So I'm willing to work on it all, all day long if we can figure this out. Like, like Paul said, it is temporary, but we, we got to be somewhat judicious about how we do.
You know, let's face it, there's other businesses downtown that we need to be concerned about, like Marty said. And Marty's church as well, they utilize. So I get that. I mean, it's, it's about working with all the businesses in that area that would be affected by something.
Right, right. And I like the Main Street option.
Maybe give me lunch or something for all these people like that.
I like the Main Street option.
See, I got you.
I, I like the Main Street table option. I think it'd actually be better anyway. Keeping an eye on tables around a solid brick wall, it's kind of hard to do if someone walks off. You'd never know they were gone, you know? And money could be laying there on a table or whatever. I think, whatever. So, you know, I'm not a business owner, so I can't speak on these things. But I'm just saying, we can't allow this as, as it is. So this won't get moved, but it'll go back for more, more work on it. Reserve funds for the feasibility study.
Thank you, council president. This item will be moved to the business meeting if council decides to do so. Last year, the City of Batavia council authorized the city manager to move forward with a site-specific feasibility study for the potential construction of a new police station. The council authorized spending of up to $50,000 from the Facility Reserves Fund to conduct the study. The resolution to expend the funds expired at the end of the 2019-20 fiscal year. Needs to be reapproved in the 2021 fiscal year so the city can undertake the study. There is a memo that gives you way more detail than that, tentative project goals and milestones and historic timeline of the length of time that the city has been, and probably prior to this, discussing the home of the police station.
So basically, the building they're in now was 100 years old in 1955. So.
Who knows what's underneath this wall? So any questions or concerns on that? So this would move to tonight's business meeting so that we can get that study started while we're in the process of trying to get our finances in order. These are one of the steps to keep moving that forward.
Yep, absolutely.
So we're in consensus to move that to tonight's meeting? Here it is. Move the proposal. Architect?
Yep. Directly in conjunction with moving forward with the feasibility study is the solicitation of Architecture Unlimited. It's a professional firm in which we have an existing relationship with, so it would fall under procurement of services, professional service, services. And they offered us a proposal back in March to conduct a feasibility study for $41,200. Again, that, there could be some overrun, so we'd still like to keep the $50,000 moving from reserve. And we believe the study will take approximately six months. Their qualifications and the information planning document is attached to show what they would do in terms of looking at the site, determining layout for the site, the square footage, the ability to expand if needed, listing of regulatory requirements, and breakdowns of probable design and construction costs for the site and overall construction of the new facility. At this point, if council moves this forward and passes that business, that would start that phase. The phase after that would be design and engineering, and we would go out with an RFP for that. And then we would go out separately for a bid for construction at the phase after that. During this whole process, while we're looking at the feasibility, I'll be working to offer information to you on how we will finance it, what debt will be rolling off, and how we, we'll, we'll be able to afford it with a goal not to increase taxes to do so.
Okay, council ladies, but right now we need the, the firm to do the study that could be approved at the business meeting. Any questions on that? So that gets moved forward to tonight's business. The Fair Housing Office.
Last thing for conference, you have a resolution. Whenever there's a change in the manager's position, you see this resolution come forward. I've actually modified it to ensure that the Fair Housing Officer and the ADA coordinator. I've actually modified it to ensure that the Fair Housing Officer and ADA coordinator is the city manager with no name attached to it.
Is that okay? Is that allowed by the...
Absolutely.
ADA can do that, where we can just name a title versus a specific person? So that would simplify, and then in the future, it just automatically becomes more of the city managers, unless we need to change it to a designated person, we change the tenant, otherwise...
Right. And any change of law and rule or regulation that might have us revisit this through our grant programs or other things, otherwise, it would be clear that whoever the acting city manager, city manager is, would be the Fair Housing Officer and ADA Coordinator.
Any questions on that? Okay, we favor moving that to tonight's, is that going to tonight's, or is that supposed to tonight's?
No.
All right, so we favor moving that to tonight's business?
Yeah.
Okay, Vic, it's moved. Motion to adjourn. Seconded by, made by Mr. Canelli, seconded by Mr. Beely. All in favor? No, all in favor, call the roll. Thinking very important, executive session.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, now, open the call to order the special, for the normal business meeting. Do you all have a copy of the May 2020 financials? Is there any questions or concerns on that? Okay, those are approved. What about the June 2020 minutes? Any omissions or concerns on that? Approved. Agenda items. Resolution 50, 2020, the Keeler Construction for the Franklin Street, Ms. Briggs. 51, 2020, Eli Fish, temporary, Ms. Briggs. 52, 2020, the Budget Revenue and Expense Police Station Feasibility Study. 53, 2020, the Architector for this feasibility study, Mr. Baikowski. And the Fair Housing Officer, Mr. Beely. City Attorney, report?
I will, or if you are busy, continue to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, I have nothing specific to report on at this moment.
City Managers, report?
I'll be very brief as well, as it's late. The BLT funding did come through. You should have seen the memo that I issued to you, so that's great news. We didn't plan for that in the budget, and we just got information from the county that the quarter, their second quarter, our first quarter, sales tax was down 16.83%, better than my projected 30%. So in terms of looking at cash flows in the budget, we're getting good news over and over again, and our hope is that that will continue, and we'll be able to possibly look at unfreezing those hirings we have right now for certain positions, including three firefighters, as well as bringing back a few of our part-time workers.
What months are the quarter, the first quarter?
Their first quarter is January, February, January, February, and March, is Q1, and that's our fourth quarter of the past fiscal year. Lastly...
Their budget year is January, or is it April 1st?
Lastly, you heard about a bill, Assembly 10492. It would allow municipalities who needed to apply reserves to their operating budgets in this year, because everybody's budgets are tanked, basically.
Penalties are...
Not, I don't think with that on the reserve part of it. It has to be COVID-related expenses, but right now, you can probably guess, most expenses can be attributed to a COVID-related expense. That has not still been delivered to the governor's desk for action, so it still sits there. And we have no more information on the federal stimulus moving forward. Multiple different versions of the stimulus have come out. Some have municipalities included, all the way down to the city and village level, others don't.
Any questions before moving to that? Okay. Any unfinished business?
We just have to get to the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm only saying that because I have a...
I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me.
Very quickly, Vic has announced that October 3rd will be the Live Walk this year. That is something that brings a lot of people to downtown. They're rolling out two new programs. One will be called Tasty Tuesday, where all downtown restaurants will give special treats. The other will be Shop Small Saturday, where all businesses downtown will give specials. And they are very proud to say that the live line for downtowners moving along rapidly.
Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Any target date from the live target that's supposed to come?
No, not yet.
I know, I didn't look at it.
All right. Any unfinished business, though? Okay, Resolution 50, 2020, Ms. Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement for Keeler Construction for the 2020 Infrastructure Improvement Project, number 2020, year two, A, Franklin Street, and Richmond Avenue Sewer Project.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns?
Where is Article 7, Section 105.18, the Council of Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of your office, as far as the potential condition of security, or sale or exchange of security held by the public bank, but only if the purpose substantially affects the value thereof. And, whereas Article 7, Section 105.1F, the Council of Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment issues, which may occur to a corporation, or matters needed to be appointment, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, if you are resolved by the council, the city will candid a bad approval of this motion. The city council must hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
And Resolution 54, 2020, Mr. Beely.
And Council President, I move a resolution appointing a Fair Housing Officer and an ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator.
Seconded by Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?